You're watching BCTV. We're all about Branford. You're watching BCTV, Branford Government Television, a service of Branford Community Television. This program is brought to you in part through the support of the Town of Branford.
Okay Fred, we'll check back in with Fred as well. Joe Bayuzo, is Joe here?
Joe Bayuzo's here.
Excellent, thanks Joe. Marcy Palusi, Marcy, are you here?
You better.
Fred?
Yeah, Marcy's here.
Marcy's here, great. Fred, can you, uh, can you speak?
Am I coming through?
Right now, yeah, but it was a little spotty.
Push that up. Ask, am I here? Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
So am I on board, you guys?
Um, one leg, for sure.
Okay.
Uh, Massimo Legori, Massimo, are you here?
Massimo Legori's here.
Thanks, Massimo. Sharon Hutner, Sharon, you're here?
Sharon Hutner is here.
Yes, and I'm Chuck Andrews' chair. Our staff this evening is our town planner, Harry Smith. Harry, are you here?
I am here.
Our assistant planner, Evan Bryan. Evan?
Here.
And also, uh, our clerk recording secretary lurking around is Michelle Martin. We'll follow our normal format for public hearing, which means the first thing we're gonna do is ask our secretary to read the legal notice. This will be the test, Fred.
Okay. We ready?
Yes.
Uh, I just wanna preface it by saying that there are three, I'm gonna read three notices from town, and I'm gonna read them right. But here it goes. Legal notice, Town of Branford. The Planning and Zoning Committee, Town of Branford, tonight. Here. We have a Thursday, March twenty-three at seven PM, remote. The two three guard two hearing hours prior to the meeting. Application number twenty-three special exception for grading point eight and coastal site plan to demo on on twenty-five
um
or two. Application number twenty-three, one. Except yeah.
Maybe, um.
Harry, you want me to read it?
Yeah, if you got it right up, I've got it too, but go ahead.
Yeah, uh, Fred, uh, Fred, if you can hear us, you're, you're stating in and out, we can't hear you. It's, it's unfortunately, it's not quite coherent, we can't.
Okay, that's okay. Uh, you know what I'm doing, uh, Harry, you have.
Yeah, we'll read the notice, don't worry about it. Yeah, if you could call in, maybe that's the best way to go.
Yeah, maybe we can call Evan to get on the phone. And, uh, I'll do on the phone. Okay, I'll do that.
All right.
Okay.
Why don't I just read the notice then? Um.
Go ahead.
Okay, legal notice, Town of Branford. The Planning and Zoning Commission of the Town of Branford, Connecticut, hereby gives notice, a public hearing is to be held on Thursday, March thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three at seven PM. By remote technology, consider the applications listed below. Information regarding how to participate in public hearings will be provided in the commission's meeting agenda that will be posted on the town's website at least twenty-four hours prior to the meeting. Application number one, twenty-three dash two dot five. Special exception for grading, section six point eight and coastal site plan to demo the house on thirty Brockett's Point Road and construction of an addition to the house on twenty-eight Brockett's Point Road. Skylar Coulter, applicant and owner. Uh, apple, number two, application twenty-three dot dash three dot one, special exception for grading, section six point eight and coastal site plan located at fifteen Etzel Road for the demo of the existing house and the construction of a new home. Vincent Federico, applicant Nancy Tomassini, owner. Um. Public hearing number three, application number twenty-three dash three dot two. Um. Point one. Special exception for grading, section six point eight and coastal site plan located at eighteen dash nineteen Etzel Road for the demo of the existing house and the construction of a new home. Vincent Federico, applicant Jennifer Federico, owner. That said, hearings, all persons have the right to be heard. Copies aren't found at the Planning and Zoning Commission's office at the Planning and Zoning Department, ten nineteen Main Street, Branford, Connecticut, oh-six-four oh-five. Writed communications may be sent to the above address or to planning and zoning at branford hyphen C T dot gov, Branford Planning and Zoning Commission, C. Andres, Chairperson.
Chuck Andrews here, thank you, Harry. We'll follow our normal format for public hearings, which is that the applicant will go first, make its presentation with, uh, the applicant or its consultants. When we're done with that, we turn it over to, uh, commission and staff. We have a summary of a staff report. After the, uh, staff summarizes report, we open up for questions, comments from commission members. At that point, we open up for the public portion, and I'm gonna ask Evan to explain how you participate remotely in this public remote, uh, session. And after the public, and we asked you to state your name for the record and, uh, make your comments. After the public portion is completed, we allow the applicant to respond to any public comments. We may or may not continue the public hearing depending on how things go. And, uh, with that, I'll ask, um, Evan to, uh, review with us the process for participating in the public hearing as a member of the public.
Uh, sure, if your computer has a microphone, um, down at the bottom of your screen, uh, there's a reactions button, you can select that, it gives you the option to raise your hand or select raise hand. Uh, if you'd like to speak during the public hearing, uh, please select raise hand or type into the chat that you'd like to speak. Um, if you're dialing in by phone, uh, you can press star nine to indicate that you'd like to participate. Uh, we ask that everybody, uh, state their name at the beginning of their question or comment.
Chuck Andrews here, thank you, Evan. With that, we'll, uh, commence with our public hearing items. Items number one and two, well, here, here together, they're both the same property address. And applicant, that is Silver Linings Development LLC, care of Carl Mueller, applicant and owner. And the applications are a special exception for two-family residents, as well as a special exception modification of the parking requirements. So with that, is the applicant ready to proceed on those applications?
Uh, I think Tony Thompson is here, representing the applicant.
Yes, hi. Evening. Um, we are here for some new, primarily, uh, one of the applications is relief for the parking requirement for, uh, six fifty Main Street. Um, we've, we've been through a couple of iterations of this, uh, in front of the zoning board of appeals and, um, and the town center review board. So the town center review board was pretty favorable in what we're proposing for building number two, a conversion from, um, that mixed-use commercial building that used to be Napa Auto Parts and the antique store and several other things. And they liked the idea and the concept of the two-family conversion. They wanted to see some additional landscaping on the plan. So prior to their request for landscaping, we did fulfill the parking requirements for both buildings. Again, there's two buildings on that very small parcel. Um, once they, they were really looking for some landscaping, we are asking the board for some relief on the landscaping requirements to eliminate one of the parking spots, which pretty much, um, the eight spots that were initially required pretty much filled up the whole lot, and that was with relief from the parking area um, outside the permitted building line. So what, what Evan just brought up on the screen is our new plan. So originally, we needed eight spots to fulfill the parking requirements, and that area all the way over to the right, that herringbone um, hatch area was the last of the eight spots that was required. Um, because the, the parcel is pretty much, I believe it's ninety-eight percent impervious surface and building, um, there wasn't really a lot of opportunity to landscape the perimeter of the building um, without relief from this parking requirement. And the, the town center review board, again, was very helpful. Also wanted to see a little more dedicated path to the building's entries. So that's where we came up with the plan that you see that has the, the herringbone pathway that does address both entries into, um, the building on the right, the, the two-family home. Um, the, the first path to the right is a little entry vestibule for the ground floor apartment. And as you continue to the north, that path brings you to the entry to the second floor apartment, yep. Where Evan has the cursor, you can see the stairs and the, uh, potential elevator that brings you up to the second floor. With, with that in mind, we, we did kind of create a little pocket for plantings along the right side of the building. You can see it's labeled planters and planters. And in tandem with that, um, I did wrap the path around to the rear of the building to make access to potentially, um, uh, an area for garbage cans and other things that we might not wanna see. And then again, in tandem with that whole landscape idea, we've kind of dedicated the area between the two buildings right now to a little green space. Um, we're, we're hoping to do some, some lawn there and maybe a planting pergola and a couple of, um, privacy hedges, both in the front and the rear of that grassy area. Um, the rear of that lot does face a parking lot for another kind of mixed-use commercial space. And then the area on the front that borders the path uh, in front of the cars or the parking area, we just wanted to do some, a little more mature landscaping to give some privacy to that green area. I, I will make a mention that all the way to the left of building one on John Street itself is a very dedicated masonry or, or brick planter um, that, by the way, I, I was just down there today. Full bloom with pathivals and, and pretty nice. So it, it's literally on the edge of the road, on the edge of the pavement, it, it's integrated into the face of that building. Um, it's about as tight a squeeze as you can get, but I do think it does provide, um, you know, landscaping to the, the more visual end of this, um, this location. The area where the parked cars are is John Street, the side street, and, um, you know, I, I don't know how vital additional landscaping other than that we, what we've provided here is necessary, although we do have the idea of maybe some planters, as I show in the front of building number two. Something that perhaps could be moved and not really obstruct the path there. Um, as we spent more and more time there, I, I, I've been able to go down there and park off-street without any problem. I, I will say, there is foot traffic, there's, um, I always see a woman pushing a baby stroller, um, just one or two people walking by. So that, that would be the reason for not really hardscaping the front, but maybe planters that didn't overcome the, the front. Um, the, the, a door right now, the door of the existing building dumps right out into the very narrow sidewalk or almost really onto the street. There's about five feet there. So we don't have an opportunity to do for, um, let's say, a strap, a strip of grass. It really goes right out to sidewalk. Um, as it does on the left side of the building as well. I, I guess you can call it a parking lot, it's kind of a rubble strewn, uh, loose gravel parking area. And, um, I think, you know, again, with the input from the town who's been, been helpful and the town center review board, the, the relief we're seeking for the parking requirement is really that one spot, that one out of eight that would give us the opportunity to do what we have illustrated here. And like I said, I, I've been down there quite a bit. There, there is off-street parking, there seems to be a lot of off-street parking. Um, John Street, down to the right, there's maybe three or four houses on that street, it goes into a dead end. Doesn't seem to be busy. And, um, there's other on-street parking available within, you know, fifty feet, a hundred feet of the building as well. So I, I think really, we, we're hoping to get the relief on that parking requirement to provide, um, a, a pretty perspective from, um, from Main Street, really. It's the inside corner, and it would be a, a nice visual to soften, uh, the proposed, um, new structure that we're putting up there.
Uh, Chuck Andrews here, thank you, Mr. Thompson. Anything else?
Um, I, I guess we'll touch on the, the first, um, request is, um, a special exception for, um, a two-family home. So, you know, again, I, obviously, I have an office in town, I think a lot of the people on the board, uh, have an office in town. Um, we like the walking path and we like walking into the center of town, we like our town center, I think everyone on board with that. And we, we, we do notice there is a lack of, um, more modern, um, pleasant, fit-up um, apartments. And really, that's what we're trying to provide here. We're, we're not trying to stuff a lot into this. Actually, in the long run, I think we're taking a little of the onus off of that location by allowing a residential, uh, two-family house there as opposed to say, um, uh, Napa Auto Parts, which was a busy, busy place. I myself, a little bit of a car buff, used to go there quite a bit. Um, it was complete chaos. And I, I think, you know, relieving the, the commercial aspect of a high-traffic, um, business, as Napa was, um, is a good thing for the town. Um, it's a pleasant walk to town. I think it will, um, help, um, gentrify the town center. And we, we are in the long run hoping to do the, do the same thing to building number one, which currently is occupied as an apartment on the top floor, and Dr. De Zura, chiropractor, on the ground floor. Um, we haven't really gotten our hands on that building yet. I mean, it's, it's, Kurt Muller does own it. Uh, we just haven't gotten into the actual planning phase of that. But we do hope to do the same thing, another two-family home. So we would end up, you know, with two, uh, four, a total of four in-town, um, renovated or modern-style apartments, which, uh, again, I, I just think is a really good, um, uh, item to, to provide to the town center.
Chuck Andrews here, thank you, Mr. Thompson.
Thank you.
Um, Evan, you wanna review the staff reports?
Sure. So, uh, like Tony had described for us, uh, the applicant's here today for a two-family special exception. They're in the BR zoning district. Um, they do not satisfy the bulk requirements of that district, however, they received a total of eight variances from the zoning board of appeals. Um. This structure in twenty-twenty-one, or the structure that was there originally, uh, this one on the bottom left-hand side, the applicant had planned to keep that, um, but with some unforeseen circumstances, uh, throughout some of the construction, uh, they had to take it down at one point. Um. So this structure was approved in twenty-twenty-one for the dog grooming facility. Um, and as, as part of that application, uh, you, or the Planning and Zoning Commission had approved, um, the same parking modification that the applicant is submitting today. Uh, the parking requirement for that use was twenty-four spaces. Um, and I think they were providing the same number of spaces on the site. Um, and for this fate, for this use, um, it requires a total of eleven spaces. Um, so significant number of spaces, or a reduction in the number of spaces, uh, for that past approval, um, that a former applicant had received. Um, a landscaping plan was not provided, however, uh, they did add landscaping onto, uh, their, not only the plan from Tony Thompson, but onto their survey as well. Um. Um, the submitted plan was not prepared by a landscape architect. A waiver of this requirement would need to be, uh, adopted by the commission. Um, as well as, given the location of the existing structures and the size and shape of the lot, um, staff feels that, uh, the applicant can't comply with the strictest application of the, um, landscaper requirements of section six-three. Um, and so we recommend the commission waive these requirements per section six-three L. Um. Back to the parking modification. Um, section six-five I, uh, states that the commission may by special exception approve the modification of parking requirements if it finds that one, uh, such modifications are being proposed for sites that historically have accommodated uses that do not comply with current parking standards, and that such historical use patterns have not created unreasonable risk to public health and safety. Uh, staff feels that the past uses, um, parking demands have been accommodated by this site uh, without creating any unreasonable risk to public health or safety. Um, the applicant did not provide any lighting information, however, condition has been added that would require any proposed lighting be compliant with section six point seven. Um, a soil erosion incentive control plan is not required, uh, per section six-ten B. They appear before the town center, like Mr. Thompson talked about. On February tenth, they were issued a positive recommendation, and based on the application materials, uh, they generally satisfy the special exception criteria. Uh, staff recommends two findings. One is the modification of the parking requirements per section six-five I, one, to the seven spaces proposed is warranted, warranted as the site has historically accommodated uses that do not comply with current parking standards without creating a risk to public health and safety. Uh, and finding number two, subject to compliance with the conditions listed below, the commission finds that the applicant has demonstrated excellence in landscape design per section six-three L two, uh, and allows the preparation of proposed landscaping by a design professional not registered as a landscape architect. And they, we also propose one condition, that all lighting has to be compliant with section six point seven.
Chuck Andrews here, thank you, Evan. Any questions or comments from commission members before we open it up to the public? Hearing none, then, uh, let's go ahead and open it up to, oh.
I think Sharon wanted to, uh.
Hi, I just want to, um, to, uh, ask a question about the, um, waiving the landscape architect requirement. Does that mean then that they won't be responsible for planting at least seventy percent native plants as well?
We can add a condition that would require that.
Okay, that would be great.
Sure.
Chuck, Fred Rusoff?
Fred?
Um, just a quick question to Tony. Um, I noticed that there are seven parking spaces, you know, of our landscaping goes. It's to take the very first parking space on the we're supposed to sit at half a space. Then go down the line and make full spaces, and then the other half where he's converted it to, um, I, I guess, walkways and, and plantings, make that the other half. It, would that, would that give more uh, a, a, an appearance of plantings? The, right now, what's being proposed are plantings really kind of to the other side of the building, the far side of the building where he took the parking lot instead of having seven parking spaces in a row, but you have a uh, the first bit, uh, uh, divided in half or maybe even less. It would be a planter island, and then the spaces would begin, the, 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 so no, instead of having seven spaces in a row, you have a, a base with parking space, seven in a row, and then the other half would be the up against the building. I just, that's what I thought when, I, I took I, I took a look at it, I was just thinking about, you know, is there any way, it's hard, I know that pervy surface eighty-seven percent, so is there a way to do something at least at the front? What I thought was, was it possible, uh, within the parking space, all the way out to the front of the building, but push that a little bit, with a planter island there, and then the parking space would begin?
Um, you, you were breaking up a little, but I, I would address that. I, I think originally the board, uh, the town center review board was, was hoping to get people in, in a path closer to the building, so they weren't walking behind cars. The, the one, one of the items of relief that we got was that, um, let's just say, the bumper of the car is closer to the road than what is generally permitted by statute. We're, we're outside the building line, and we, we felt concerned that people would be, you know, very close to walking to the back of the cars. I, I would also like to mention, if Evan could bring up that landscape plan again, that we, we hope to not have the path along the face, or, um, the, the east side of building one. That was just shown, um, because we haven't gotten into the building one yet when I drew that. We, we are thinking that, um, right now, the, the, the entry to building number one is along the sidewalk, um, where the two existing doors are. We're hoping to, to swing the entry to the area in where that lawn is, so that people aren't trespassing across the parking lot and the front of the building. And, and there is a dedicated path that doesn't bring you across the back of the cars as they're backing out. If you look in that illustration, um, where I have the label asphalt uh, and aggregate parking area to the curb line, it's only a couple of feet, and there's really not a sidewalk to speak of there. So we're, we're trying to encourage people to not have to trespass, you know, diagonally across the middle of the parking area. If you look at building one, I am showing where the two existing doors are. We're hoping to, again, relocate them to the right side of the building, um, generally facing that lawn or that court. And it might be that, that, that masonry paved patio all the way to the left doesn't need to extend that far. Um, that was a general concern, is people kind of walking willy-nilly across the parking lot, and, um, instead of give a more dedicated path to the entries. And there is that brick planter, it's not shown here, uh, but there is a pretty big, nice planter in that, in that corner of the building um, on the left-hand side that you see from Main Street. It, it's actually pretty dramatic. Um, uh, we, we did not have the building in our hands last year when things were starting to bloom, but I was there this week, I was there today. And, um, that, that, that planter's, uh, in full bloom right now, and I do think that's gonna help um, break up the, the impervious surface and the hardscape of the, the front of the building.
It, 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 uh, I I'm not, I'm not I am not the amazing that's going to uh, uh, I'm not calling it.
You're breaking up again.
Yeah. Um, hi Chuck, it's Massimo. Are we just commenting here?
Where, well, yeah, Fred, Fred, unfortunately Fred had some comments and then he's.
Yes, yeah, Fred, I'm calling it.
Um, okay, Fred's gonna call in. Massimo, did you have some, uh, you have questions or comments?
I do, I do. I, I just wanna comment, I, um, on, on, uh, what the existing building is right now. And, um, and to the design that it's going to be, that they have proposed. Uh, it's like night and day. Um, I work in that area, and, um, night and day meaning good, what it's going to be, and not so good right now at the moment. It's sort of an eyesore over there in that area. Um. And, uh, you know, it, it would be nice just being, you know, in that area, you know, every day, pretty much, uh, or at least five days a week to have something, um, with the structure and the, and the, you know, to have something that looks that nice and, uh, take away the eyesore that's there at the moment. I, I like the design of it. That's all I wanted to comment.
Uh, Chuck Andrews here, thanks, Massimo. Um, I think, uh, Fred is, is in the process of calling in. Is there, are there any uh, other, uh, Fred, I, I can see that the phone in your hand, Fred.
Chuck?
Yes, Massimo, uh, Marcy, Marcy, yes, go ahead.
I'm just gonna put my two cents in, if that's okay.
Absolutely.
So I, I think that there's some confusion with the relief of the landscape requirements, while I wholeheartedly agree that relief needs to be given because of the site configuration, and I think, um, they've done an excellent job with addressing the hardscape and the flow and all that with the town center review board. But maybe I'm missing something, but I don't see anything that indicates what the actual plants are in that area. Uh maybe I'm missing something, but I don't see anything that indicates what the actual plants are in that area. And I I think that's important, you know, whether they're native or not, or what percentage are native. That's important to consider um in the application, so I I'm kind of looking at it in two regards, I don't. I don't think that it should deter an approval, but I do think that it's important that they submit. The types of plants and varieties that they want to use in there as part of the application, and I do think that it's. A a great improvement, and I do think that they need for housing in this town is. Very, very needed, given that there's very few listings and and whatnot, so. You know, I I think it's a very solid application, I just. I I think we're confusing this relief on, you know, landscape excellence, I know we don't have any other way to give it to them, but. I just am concerned that it's too far reaching and that it's relieving them of the responsibility of naming the plants that they do want to put in there. In the areas that they have available for planting.
Uh Chuck Anderson, thank, thank you, Marcy. Is there a response to that? Uh is there a list of plantings? Uh I know we talked about a condition about seventy percent native plantings, but actually. I think Marcy correctly points out, at least I didn't see the the actual planting list or was it somewhere that I missed it?
Um, I I do believe I labeled the plants, uh Evan, could you pull that image back up again? What what we were hoping to do was um. By the combination of plants that provided at least some relief in color um through all four seasons. I I believe um there was flocks on there, uh spirea. Um, I I believe a Japanese maple. Um, I do thought, I did think that there was a list provided, but I I think in general, the idea would be. In 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 the little areas that we have, that seasonally, there would be some color. To the the plantings that we had there, so that, you know, in the middle of winter, it just wasn't all bare trees. Or bare bare uh vacant pots. And another reason we were thinking about those portable plantings. Is, you know, there there might be some things, we do have kind of a generous lobby for the uh uh upstairs apartment, that maybe we can bring them in. Uh seasonally and and bring them back out. So uh if we don't, if we haven't developed a specific plan yet, I I do think. Again, that would be a condition of approval, um uh unless we get that parking relief. We we don't have the opportunities that we're asking the board for, so I I don't know if we actually, um I guess that's not labeled. Uh, I thought. So I I see that 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 one is not labeled, I I thought I did provide a labeled.
Tony, I think one of the iterations of your plan did have a planting list. Um, I wasn't able to find it this afternoon, but I think one of them have, but we could certainly put into the condition that. Um, you know, the site plan or the the plan shall be revised to include uh seventy percent uh native plantings. Um, to the satisfaction of the town planner, um and I think in the past, we've actually referred. Um, that planting list to Marcy, cause because of her background, so we can do the same uh for this application. Um, and just to make sure that there is a uh planting list that we can keep in mind that's gonna be used at this site. Um, Marcy, would that satisfy your concern?
Um, yeah, I mean, like I said, I I have no, I have no issues with the projects and the relief, I just think that, you know. It it's very open ended, we don't have some idea of how many. Plants and what types they're gonna use, you know, I mean, Tony's saying all the right things as far as color and seasonal variability, all that, I'm just, you know. Doing the administrative comment, I guess. But yeah, I could review it if needed.
Chuck Anderson, thank you, Marcy. Um Fred, did you have any further comments? Uh do we? Do we have Fred? I did have Fred, I'm trying to unmute him. I don't know if he called in or what.
There we go.
And Sharon will get to you in a second soon as we get to hear from Fred.
Thank you.
Fred did cro- Fred did call in. And I'm sorry, I'm not familiar.
How about now?
There he is.
Uh, okay.
Fred, could you turn the volume down on your computer?
How about now? No good, no good.
Uh, turn that volume all the way down on your computer, it should help.
How about that? Still no good.
Still no good. Hold on.
That's even worse. How about, uh if I get out of the meeting altogether?
You're fine, you're fine now, Fred, I muted your your microphone, that was the issue.
Oh, you did, okay, okay. Uh i- if it's possible, one more time to put up the um uh. Uh the drawing of the parking.
Sure. You see it, Fred?
Uh here it is, okay. Uh again, this question is to Tony. Uh, the parking lot shows two cars. If you go to the left, the first parking space. It it uh my my question was, is it possible to divide that to let's say three feet? And move all the parking to the right and to make a planter out of the, out of the first part of the that space?
So we would be losing another spot, those spots are laid out to the town standards of nine by uh eighteen. And there really isn't much room in there to um to to eliminate or or introduce something a little wider. So I I would, I don't think there would be real, I I also would wonder about introducing a planter in the middle of a parking lot that. It's really a very, very tight maneuver to get into those spots from um from the the. Tyler on the left hand side of the road.
Um, that also may.
Uh, right where it says up to the left or left hand corner of building one. Um, there is a a giant masonry planter on that corner of the building.
Okay, okay, okay.
Um, that may also create some compliance issue with our site triangles um. Um, requirements, um and I also believe that this layout that's before us now. Um, we had referred a different iteration to our building department. And they had suggested something like this uh to meet ADA requirements, so that there's access for people to walk into, not only. Um, the second story entrance, but the first one as well, you know, the way it's laid out now. It it allows for people to walk to both buildings without having to walk through the parking spaces. Uh, and I believe that's some sort of ADA requirement, um or at least the state code requirement. That was a suggestion from the building inspector.
Okay, okay, okay.
That, thank, thank you for, Evan. Uh, we still have a nickel, it sounds like. Uh Sharon, you had a.
I'm here again, um I just wanted to um remind everybody that in addition to Marcy's expertise. We have a list on file at town hall from the forest commission. Um, about native plants and shrubs and. Um, that's really thorough, so just once.
I can get that to Tony.
Um, is there a survey submitted with this?
Yes.
Okay, just, I'm just, because I like, I'm looking at the design that it's there now and it's. A bit conceptual and I think it works fine for the back building, but I think, you know, when he's ready to come for for the front building. You know, that would be the time to address the spacing of the parking and whether you, you know, cause he's giving, okay, so you're doing. You know, he he's got, you know, space to back, he's left extra space, backing space relative to the street, which I think is smart. You know, it it's difficult to see from the line how that front street affects a building, but I think these are all issues that. Need to happen or need to be addressed relative to the front building, not the back building, the back building, he's. Given the appropriate clearances for access and parking, you know. As it stands, so, I mean, to me, it's, I'm just looking at that back building, but. I also think this is a really good example of what they were presenting with the um desegregate. Group about reducing the parking requirements, cause people can. Come by public transportation and serve by public transportation, so on and so forth, so. I'm just sort of throwing that out there, you know, we seem to be very worried about one space.
Chuck Anderson, thank you, Marcy. Anything else, any other further comments from commission members or staff? Got then, let's open it up to the public, is any member of the public wish to comment on this, and if you do, Evan, why don't you remind us how to public and participate? Uh, down at the bottom of your screen, there's a reactions button, then that gives you a few options, you can press raise hand. Uh to indicate that you'd like to speak, you can also type into the chat. Um, or you can just wave your hand in front of the camera and I'll try to find you. I do not see anyone this time. Okay. Any further comments, uh Mr. Thompson?
Um, no further comments, um like I said, I I think the. The town center review board was very helpful in kind of steering this, I I appreciate Marcy's input as well. And um we we are just trying to. Get this project moving ahead, we we did have some problems when we first started dismantling the building. And we are in a little bit of a crunt, so again, I appreciate everyone's uh review of the matter and uh and hopefully we get approval.
Okay, uh uh Chuck Anderson, thank you, Mr. Thompson, any further comments from commission members or staff? Nope. Hearing none, then we will close uh these items, number one to two is a public hearing, I think this is probably something we can take up uh after we uh finish our public hearings, thank you. So that brings us into item number three, which is the McDonald's uh application, that's been a continuation. Of the additional drive through proposal for McDonald's, and my understanding is. There has been some back and forth and some additional materials were submitted to us, but there were some further questions. That I think our own uh, our consultant had asked and the applicant has requested additional time. To continue this to our April twentieth meeting, is that correct, Evan in here? Uh, yes, they've uh granted an extension and asked to continue to the April twentieth meeting. Okay.
So Harry Smith Town Planner, so we can accept the extension if you want to do that and uh continue.
Okay, so we will accept the extension. And so for item number three, if you're on that one, the McDonald's, that one, we're going to continue to our April twentieth meeting. Again, that's a remote meeting as well, seven P M, uh same format. That will bring us into item number four, which is Schuler Coulter applicant and owner. Twenty thirty Brockett's Point Road, special exception coastal site plan demolition. For the house on thirty Brockett's Point Road and construction of an additional house on twenty eight Brockett's Point Road. Uh, is the applicant ready to proceed with that one?
Uh, Chuck, uh Jim Preddy, Chris Cole Engineering, uh representing the Coulters. Uh, I'm gonna go right to the map. Um. So uh hopefully you could all see this. This is uh, I'm zooming in a little bit. Um, this is the the survey that we prepared for the two properties, this is twenty eight here. And this is thirty. Kind of goes out, it's odd, very odd shape, um out here at the end of the road. Um, there's a corner of Brockers Point Road. Uh, what they're, what they're planning to do is to tear down the house on this property. Oh, I should mention that, you know, this is R three zone, both of these properties are. Uh, existing undersized lots, um. Oh, so what they wanna do is tear the house down in this lot and combine the lots and then add on to the. I'll say the front of the rear house. Um, a- away from the water side, this is a, this is actually a pretty steep drop off, this. Yeah, this is a of the fifteen flood zone, but this this first floor is up at um thirty. Thirty-three or something like that, it's pretty high up, um so the flood zone is down low on wall. Um, the property sits up kind of nice and high here. Um. So this is the, this is the uh proposal, uh add on to the front of the house, um there's an indoor pool. Uh and and some other things going on, new entryway and this terrace area that kind of, the property um. Uh pitches down toward the house, so there's some uh s- site steps and terraces to get to the front entryway here. The driveway on the side will remain where where it's always been, uh that won't change. Um, they are gonna keep the little garage and it'll be the only uh real accessory building, um. We do have, um we have met uh all the bulk standards, we haven't needed any variances, um. The architect, Tony Terry, has worked very diligently to fit within the coverages and the floors that are allowed. Um, by combining the two lots. Um, so. We have um, you know, typical erosion patrols notes, um so this is the. The 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 view from the front and and I show this to sort of give you a scale, a sense of scale, I mean, this is the. The the existing house that's here now and all this is about a story lower than um. You know, with the exception of this little clear story here, a- almost the whole story lower than the existing house, we're not, we're not making the building any higher or exceeding any height. Um, um. Uh limitations either. Uh, again, uh the the main part of the roof here is a whole story lower than this house, this is just a little clear story area. Um, for some additional light in the this indoor pool area. Um. Uh, there's some other sections that kind of show you how this is being built, um I mean, if you have any specific. Uh, questions about any of the plans, um I believe Tony Thompson, uh Tony Terry is on. Um, the call as well here. Um. But again, we we're basically um. Uh I guess in essence lowering the density here by, instead of two houses, we are just gonna have one house. Um, and we're making a lot, two lots that are non-conforming actually conforming and. Um, we've fit everything basically in a bulk standard, without the need for any variances. Um, we are. In the coastal resource zone, uh again, we're much higher than the um flood zone here. Uh, we're not really proposing any work, water word of the existing house. Um. And this is not, even though there are some exemptions for minor additions, I I I guess this this really isn't. A minor addition at this point. Um. So, uh I I think that's it, um in a nutshell, again, uh Tony's here, if you need some more explanation on the architecture, but. Um, otherwise I can answer questions about the site.
Chuck Anderson, thank you, Mr. Preddy, one quick question before we turn over to staff. In looking at the bulk requirements, it looks like the height of the, the height in the zone requirement is thirty-five feet. And the height of the existing taller building is thirty-eight feet, and you say no change. I'm assuming that the addition that you're proposing is is under thirty-five feet.
Oh, yes, oh yes, it's much, much shorter, yes.
Right, so you're not, you're not make, the addition isn't thirty-eight feet, which would be over.
No, no, we're, we're probably uh ten feet lower than the existing.
Okay, just checking. Evan, you wanna review the staff report with us? Uh, sure, so uh as Mr. Preddy has shown, uh the applicant's proposing to. Uh demolish one single family home, merge the lots and add on to another existing single family home. Um, they meet the bulk requirements of the R three district. Um, they have not submitted a landscaping plan, they meet the parking requirements. Um, no lighting information was submitted, however, we've added a condition that would require compliance with section six point seven for any proposed lighting. Um, no erosion control plan was submitted, however, erosion control measures were added to the site plan. Um, no stockpile was included on the site plan. Um, the commission would need to find that the measures proposed, to the extent that they are alternatives from those in the Connecticut deep. Two thousand two guidelines for soil and erosion control are acceptable. Uh, based on the application materials presented, the applicant satisfies the special exception criteria. They also meet the criteria of the uh coastal site plan review um from section nine point seven. And a referral was sent to deep, uh we received a report back on March twenty-third from the land. And Water Resources Division stating that the proposal is consistent with all applicable coastal policies and they strongly suggest. Uh, that the municipal flood plan administrator reviewed the application to determine if the flood plain development permit would be required. Um, I believe that's part of the building permit process, it'll be referred to the engineering department, and if there is anything required, that's when that will be picked up. Um, staff recommends one finding that the coastal site plan is consistent with the goals and policies. Uh, of the Coastal Area Management Act. Um, and we now propose three conditions, condition number one is prior to the start of construction, erosion control measure shall be installed. Um, and we now propose three conditions. Condition number one is prior to the start of construction, erosion control measure shall be installed. Um, the second condition is that uh, any lighting is compliant with section six point seven. Um, and we've actually added a, a third condition, and that is that uh prior to the issuance of a certificate of zoning compliance or a zoning issuance of a certificate of occupancy, uh, the two lots shall be merged into a single lot.
Chuck industry, thank you, Evan. Questions, comments from commission members or staff before we open up to the public? Very none, then let's open it up to the public. Any member of the public wish to comment? Evan?
Uh, once again, if you'd like to participate, um, there is a reactions button down at the bottom of your screen. Um, and you can uh select the raise your hand if you would like to speak. And I believe we did have one person that wanted to participate. Trying to find him on the list. Um, looks like they're listed as participants, uh, and I'd like to just ask that you could state your name at the beginning of your question or comment.
I'm Elizabeth Robinson. I live at thirty-four Brockus Point Road. I just wonder how um the building, the new building that would be um there, um, the distance from our property line and uh for uh, the trees that are presently there.
Uh, uh, Ms. Pretty, can you uh, maybe you can pull up the plan and address that?
I can. Uh, hold on. Let's see. So that's.
I think to the south is her property, Jim.
Yes, to the south.
So um, uh, to my knowledge, this tree is staying. Um, and some of the other trees are, I, I think along the property line may not even be on our property here. Um, but the the house is, I think. See it. Um, this, this closest corner is eighteen feet from um the property line on this side. Uh, we're not, and it's not really any closer to the road than the existing house was. Uh, it kind of takes up sort of the same area. That, that other house was right here.
Thank, thank you, Ms. Pretty. Any further questions?
I don't understand what that, that ask, that is, can I ask? Okay. I do not understand what the rectangle is that's outside of the indoor lap pool, I guess. There's a, a, a rectangle.
Uh, that's, that's an um, a, a, an underground uh stormwater gallery, just for somewhere for the roof water to go.
Okay, um, we, we are on a lot of granite.
Agreed, and, and um, and I, I've been out, I've been out to the site and, and oh, and this, this slope here below the wall here has a lot of granite that's exposed and and the groundwater kind of bleeds out there and our thought was that this water will get into the soil and then continue its way down and bleed out like it does currently now. Um, the storing the storm, storing temporarily storing it outside is a requirement now in the zoning regulation.
Okay.
Thank you. Uh, I see one, um, Evan, there looks like one other person's raised their hand.
Uh, yes, Mr. Montag. Would you like to participate?
Yes, thank you. Um, the, go- going back to the previous image that was shown. The trees in question were only one of them was to be removed. And so it, it's only sixteen and a half feet off of that line to the Robinson's pro- uh property. Is it possible to remove both of the trees that are there? The, the large oak tree? And then there's a smaller kind of a scrub oak behind it that the diagram shows currently being left there. That's correct.
This one here you're talking about?
Yes, where it says deck, that is the deck that's associated with the Robinson's home. And you can see how close that that will be encroaching upon there. It's sixteen and a half feet, isn't it? Or is it eighteen and a half feet?
Uh, there is a, there is a um, a, a bay where there that's a little bit closer. Yeah, it's, it bumps out two feet in that one.
It goes from currently, there's thirty-six feet of space. So the, the addition is moving considerably. Um, you, you know, over to the current grassy area and an outdoor deck that the old home has. So it goes from thirty-six feet from uh, the, that steel fencing down to sixteen feet.
That's correct. The, the, this building setback is fifteen feet in this area.
Correct. But there is the tree that's the large oak tree that has an X through it.
Yes.
Existing oak tree to be removed. But for some reason, they're leaving the one behind it. Is there explanation for that?
Um, so are you asking to have it removed? I'm not sure the question.
Yes.
Uh, I don't know. Tony, can you answer that question?
Um, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
I honestly don't know. Uh, by the way, that uh square bay is no longer in the picture. And so the addition is um fully eighteen feet back. I noticed that her client is in attendance, perhaps Holly Coulter would like to comment. Um, I know, I, I don't know anything about that particular tree.
Yep, sorry, this is Holly. Um, the, the tree has been there. Um, and uh, we are taking the largest of the two oaks down. Our desire is to keep that other oak in place. Uh, it's just that we are uh, we like the trees, uh, taking down the large oak tree uh is, is hard enough to do. Uh, but I believe um that tree has been there um eh, for as long as the property has been there and for as long as the Robinsons have been there. Uh, we prune the tree on a regular basis. Um, we've participated in taking other trees down. Uh, but we would like to preserve that tree if we can. Um, and, and feel as though it's, it's warranted.
Thank you, Ms. Coulter.
You're welcome.
Did I ask a question? It's Marcy.
Sure.
So to me, um, it, it's hard for me to tell what the size of the oaks are other than large or small. And whether um, you know, that larger, the larger oak next to the house, obviously with the addition, you're probably risking impact to the root zones. The smaller oak may not have some impact, but ti- depending on its proximity and the way it's removed could impact the smaller one. You know, I, I just say that just from, you know, sort of a more technical side, but you know, it seems like the removal of the tree is desired to open up a view and the the saving of the tree by the Coulters is desired to have some separation and privacy. And I think that we really need to get better information and maybe even a picture of the tree so we know what the health is and what its chance for survival is because if the large tree comes out impacting the smaller tree, you know, I wouldn't want the smaller tree, you know, falling on the storm on my house, given the way you know, the neighbors are so close and have to work together so closely. So I'm just sort of trying to outline some guidelines relative to the tree, but my real principal question is, does combining the lots and are the new areas for the combined lots and the, the totals that you give all conforming for the R three zone? Jim?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, and but Marcy, Jim pretty again, um, just, I, I just looked at the survey data that the larger tree, tree is thirty-six inches and the smaller one is uh twenty-four.
Okay, so.
Still a significant tree.
Yeah, I'm just curious how the health of the thirty-six, because trees tend to have a symbiotic relationship and you know, when one comes down the, or is damaged, the tree, the neighboring trees will tend to shoot nutrients to the one that's damaged. You know, so just taking one down, if it's in close proximity affects the area. And you know, it sounds sort of, well, you know, silly, but you know, there is science backing that. Um,
um, I, 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 I guess I would defer to the arborist when he's taking it down to make that call.
Well, right. And I think that's, you know, whatever people decide and agree on, I mean, I'm not you know, I understand the impact of very large trees near tight residential areas. So I'm not saying that I'm, you know, opposed to taking it down, we're keeping it, but I think that the neighbors should get together and come to a mutually agreeable kind of understanding with each other for the process.
All right, check in, sir. Thank you, Marcy. Sharon, you got a question or comment?
Yeah, Sharon Hunter, I just want to remind people that um oak trees support sixteen hundred different species. So just in deference to our wildlife, I agree with Marcy, you know, if the neighbors can get together and talk about it, if we could save as many trees as possible, it'll be better for the wildlife in Branford. Thank you.
Chuck industry, thank you, Sharon. Any further questions, comments from the public? There are none, then. Uh, I think we can close the public portion. Any f- further comments from uh the applicant, uh, Mr. Pretty? Any additional thoughts, any?
No, I don't think I have anything to add at this time.
Okay, how about commission members or staff?
No.
Okay, then we will close this matter as a public hearing. And again, this may be something we can take up in a bit. So thank you, Ms. Pretty.
Well.
So that brings us then to our next item, which I believe is item number five, public hearing. That's Vincent Federico applicant Nancy uh, uh Tomassini. Hope I pronounced that right, at uh owner. It's fifteen Etzel Road, special exception coastal site plan demolition of the existing home. I noticed there are two applications, one if uh from this applicant, one at fifteen Etzel Road and one at eighteen nineteen Etzel Road. They're separate applications. But uh my understanding is we're only gonna be considering the fifteen Etzel tonight. And for the second one, what's going on with that one? Is that gonna be opened and continued or?
Chuck, I could probably very easily clear that up when I show it. So, um, Jim Pretty again, Chris Gold Engineering, uh, representing um, Vinnie Federico and Nancy Tomassini. Um, let's go to the map. So uh, these are the two properties. Um, there's the very end of Etzel Road. This is fifteen on the right. Um, and this is the existing home. This is eighteen dash nineteen on the left and this existing home here. Um, uh, Jennifer Federico um, owns this property and Nancy Tomassini, which I believe is Vinnie's sister, owns this property. So that, that's two families. Um, trying to do something here together. Um, uh, but you know, uh, the regs being what they are and the world being what it is, we're handling these as two separate um prac-, you know, two separate uh applications. There was a change made to the eighteen site plan that um caused the D E P reviewer to ask for additional time, which is why that one's being tabled. Um, and we're gonna move forward with fifteen, but I will show you a little of eighteen so you can kind of get a sense for um, how they relate. Um, again, um, two properties here, uh, Branford River kind of hooks around um, uh, this property. Uh, a couple of existing uh stone jetties here. Um, they had, uh, this side on the eighteen side. Um, there is already a D E P application, a permit to rebuild the seawall on the side which I believe um the activity has been going on already. Um, and they have their um, you know, their uh D E P and Army Corps, it's all that um satisfied. So we're here tonight to push this forward. Um, again, an existing house. These um, these hatched lines here were uh, there was an exist, this existing sewer stops here at this manhole. And for some reason, there was an easement that went all the way through this property. Um, the easement has since been released. Um, I think we're just waiting on the W P C A attorney to file the uh, the deeds, but um it has been voted on and released. It went through the town engineer, actually spent about a year in various boards to get that released, but um so that's, that's what these easements to be released are all about. Um, the oh, where are we? Here we go. Uh, so again, we're here for fifteen. Um, we have um, uh, Tony Thompson has designed a house to fit within the setbacks here. Again, we did not need any variances for this property here. This is the highest part of this whole piece here is up in this corner. Um, so we kind of, it's designed to sort of fit up in that corner. Um, I show the footprint of the other house so that you can see that they're gonna actually, uh, there will be reciprocal easements, but they're gonna actually share driveway space. The two garages will face each other, so they could come in and turn or come in and turn it. And um, um, so they kind of work in tandem, the two, the two properties. But you could see there's, and there's an additional parking spot on either side, on both of them. They have um, little paved area here to park. Um, this is, this pool area and all that, that's all part of eighteen. That'll be coming back on the twentieth. Um, but it was just shown here informationally. Um, we do have the plans from Tony Thompson, uh, so you could kind of get a sense for what it looks like. And here's you know, here's that common driveway, the, the garage areas that are underneath, you kind of see what's going on. Um, but, but again, the, the, the plan was designed in such a way to fit into the odd shaped area that we're dealt with. Um, to work from with the existing setbacks from the critical coastal resource and the, and the building setbacks. Um, the building is partially within a flood zone. I mean, there, here's the, there's a line. Um, seventy-five percent of it is out of it, but there is a little corner that is in the A E flood zone. So that whole lower level will need to be designed to um, the current FEMA um regulations as far as, you know, floodproof materials and flood ports and all that business. Uh, but the main floor is, is a whole story up, so it's well above. Um, well above the flood zone there. Um, uh, again, a- and that's it. I mean, it um, it's a tear down rebuild. There was a single family home there. We're putting a single family home back, albeit a little bit bigger, but we did fit it in the um within the box the best we could here. Um, and again, Tony's here. If anybody wants to talk about the the house itself, but otherwise, um, I'll take some questions.
Uh, Chuck industry, thank you, Ms. Pretty. Um, staff report, Evan, did you prepare this one?
Uh, I did, and I actually uh made some revisions today. Um, I had noticed an error that I had made, um, or rather, uh, we noticed some errors this morning um in the bulk table. Um, I had incorrectly listed the R three district standards. Um, the applicant is uh applying the R one district standards uh per section three point nine. Uh, and they do meet all of those bulk requirements. Um, they did not submit a landscaping plan and they do meet the off-street parking requirements. Uh, again, no lighting information was submitted. However, condition has been added that would require compliance uh with our lighting section. Um, no erosion sediment control, but erosion control measures have been added to the site plan. Uh, no stockpile was included on the site plan and the commission would need to find that the measures proposed to the extent that they are alternatives uh, from those in the two thousand two deep guidelines for soil and erosion sediment control are acceptable. Um, based on the application materials presented, the applicant satisfies the special exception criteria. They also satisfy the criteria of section nine point seven. A referral was sent to deep. Um, and we received comments back, uh, which I circulated to the commission this afternoon. Um, deep stated that the commission would need, need to determine if the proposed uh, changes would be considered an increased hazard to life and property, or if it only marginally adds to such exposure. Uh, they also propose the following recommendations. Uh, recommendation number one is consider reconfiguring the house so that Uh, recommendation number one is consider reconfiguring the house so that it is entirely out of the FEMA flood zone A E. Or, or A E twelve. Um, recommendation number two, at a minimum, at a minimum, the entire new structure. Uh, must be built to be uh, FEMA zone, uh, FEMA A E zone compliant. Uh, and uh, recommendation three, to protect water quality, the commission should consider. Uh, requiring installation and maintenance of adequate sedimentation erosion controls as a condition of coastal site plan approval. Um, that is a condition of this approval. Uh, staff recommends one finding, the coastal site plan is consistent with the goals and policies of the coastal area management act. Uh, and two conditions that prior to the start of construction, erosion control measures shall be installed. And that any proposed lighting is compliant with section six point seven.
Chuck industry, sir. Thank you. Thank you, Evan. Mr. Pretty, you want to address the D E P comments?
Yeah, I mean, the house will be designed um, uh, in accordance with the FEMA rules that. Um, applied to this uh, zone here. Taking the structure completely out of the flood zone would be. Um, difficult at best. Um, it wouldn't have to be a far smaller house. Um, and. The installation and maintenance of the sedimentation erosion controls is part of every project, so that's. And that's the. Um, that's not anything new.
Okay, and uh, I mean, one of the comments is, it says the commission must determine whether the building. Whether building a new residence within the A zone will result in significant exposure of life. And property to flood hazards, or if it is only. Marginally adds to such exposure. What's your, you have an opinion on?
Uh, Jim Freddy again, I guess that, you know, any house that's. Um, built partially in a flood zone is taking on that risk, which is why they have all these um. Regulations and standards that were adopted in the building code as part of FEMA requirements. Um, and there's um. You know, there's a requirement for flood insurance for this sort of thing as well, so. I mean, the risk, there, there is a risk, but the owners are willing to take that on.
Okay, so you would um. Your opinion that it would not be a significant exposure of life and property to flood hazards?
I, I, I don't believe so, no. I don't think this is any different than uh, any of the. Houses on the shore that, you know, we've seen come through here.
Let's uh, any questions, comments from members of the commission or staff before we open up to the public? Sharon?
Um, I would just like to comment on the FEMA. Regulations. Um, I've been doing a lot of research and reading about those standards. Those standards are dated and um, if you read anything that's in a FEMA guide. It emphasizes that those should be considered minimum. Requirements and I think a house this size on that property will be. Create more um, hazards that the town will then be responsible for, so um. I, I would think that we need to reconsider it that, in that light.
Chuck industry, thank you, Sharon. Any other questions, comments from commission members before we open up the public? Or staff? There are none, then let's go ahead and open up to the public. Any member of the public wish to comment?
I'd just like to reiterate, uh, if you'd like to speak, you can type into the chat that you'd like to. Participate or down at the bottom of your screen, there's a reactions button. You can select raise hand. Uh, and if all is fails, you can raise or wave your hand in front of the camera. I'll try to find you. Uh, it looks like we do have one person that would like to speak, uh, and it is Peter Henshaw. Peter, you're still muted.
Look, uh, miss, yeah, Mr. Answer, you're muted. So there.
There you go.
Hear me?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, uh, this is Peter Henshaw, um. Two eighty-five Thimble Island Road in Branford. Uh, just a couple of comments. I realize that, that this plan will have to be evaluated within the parameters of. Current state statutes and our local regulations and ordinances. However, uh, to the extent that the commission is able to apply discretionary judgment on this application. As a special exception and as a coastal site. Review. There are a few points that I might. Uh, have you consider? Uh, and much of this you actually, and I'm sure you understand this point, but I would like to uh, reiterate it. Um, as deep as mentioned in their review, the fifteen Etzel Road. Proposal will, will be increasing Branford's inventory of at-risk coastal hazard buildings. Uh, most of the eighteen nineteen parcel, which I know is not in consideration right now, but. Most of that parcel and a portion of the fifteen parcel. Um, as well is um, is well below the um. Twelve-foot A E base flood elevation. Um, additionally, we know as, as Sharon has commented, we know the FEMA's current. Assessment of flood risk is calculated using historic data. And does not consider future change in sea level. Um, the official state recommendation through the governor's council G C three report. Is that towns plan for an additional one point seven feet of. Uh, sea level in the Long Island Sound by twenty fifty. Uh, therefore, I think um. A reasonable evaluation of this project over its. Anticipated life cycle should anticipate. Higher base flood elevations, uh, counting for sea level uh, rise. So in summary, I would just say that prudence would say that. All of the deep recommendations for this project uh, should be adopted in your approval. Thanks.
Chuck and should. Thank you, Mr. Henshaw. Are there other members of the public that wish to comment? Evan?
Uh, yes, next up is uh, Tracy Everson.
Thank you, uh, Tracy Everson, twenty-three Mill Creek Road. Um. I also sit on the representative town meeting in the fifth district. And uh, the Etzel Road property is uh, in my district. I also sit on the Branford Coastal Vulnerability Working Group. So I would like to ditto the comments of uh, Peter Henshaw. Who very succinctly um. Argued uh, in favor of the deep requirements for this property. I think that the town needs to take into consideration. The building, especially in um, A E zones. And the future sea level rise. So I would hope that the planning and zoning commission would take that. Into consideration uh, with regard to this application. Thank you.
Thank you, Miss Everson. Are there other members of the public wish to comment?
Uh, just one more time, if you'd like to participate, down at the bottom of your screen, uh, looks like we actually have Tony Thompson that wants to participate. But before you start, Tony, just one more time, down at the bottom of your screen, reactions button, you can select raise your hand if you'd like to participate. Go ahead, Tony.
Uh, okay, ladies and gentlemen. Um, I'd like to respond to those comments, whi- which actually are true. Um, in this location. They, FEMA ha- has actually reviewed these areas. And, and they've actually reduced the um, the zone, the hazard zone in that location. Considerably um, within the last couple of months. They do update their requirements every couple of years. And what we're doing here in this particular case, because both of them um, are tangent or in a flood zone. We're going several feet higher than required in the flood zone. The, the finished floor for uh, these homes will be up close to about twenty feet. Now, that doesn't mean they're. Twenty feet in the air, but there's twenty feet above base flood elevation. In an area where the base flood elevation is twelve feet. So we are taking those into consideration. Um, I will say I've probably done a hundred fifty to two hundred homes in similar locations over the years. And, and what I have found, and it includes Cozy Beach, which is the eye of most storms. Um, these areas, these homes, when they're constructed properly and to the regulations that you want, you know, us to abide by, which. We certainly have no choice and I'm agreement. Um, they become areas of refuge for these locations, because a lot of the houses in those areas are not improved. The two structures that are on that parcel of land, for some, somehow. They have stood the test of time, being down at elevation four or five. But they are subject to uh, movement in an extreme flood event. And, and what those structures do when they're broken away from their foundations, um, they do cause problems in other areas. It did happen to Cozy Beach. Many of the houses that I had designed were struck by other houses and survived ninety-nine percent intact. Because of the reg- regulations. So in, in many ways, um, by replacing a house. That is um, rundown, non-anchored to the foundation. And low lying with a house that's compliant, and, and by the way, several feet above flood compliance. And incorporating the flood ports. Um, and the other floodproof requirements. Were actually reducing the hazard risk of the structures on that location. And if, again, if anyone has any questions, I, I'd be happy to respond to them.
Chuck Anderson, I'm looking at the plan here. It looks like first floor elevation is eighteen point four.
That's correct.
Yeah, they're six to seven feet above the base flood elevation there.
And the base flood is twelve?
Yes. So the areas below the, the, below that, below the first floor, you know, the, I'll call it garage areas. Are, are typically, um, typically can be used for storage and parking and, and, and remain unfinished. But with floodproof materials and flood ports and, and, and all kinds of. You know, other things like that. Um, yeah, you know, utilities have to be above the base flood elevation and. And uh, and, and again, these houses are, are built that way. Um. The current houses are built that way because of all the regulations that are in place. The houses, if we did nothing, and those houses that are, that are there now would be, as Tony said, far bigger hazard than these new houses would be.
Second share, thank you. Uh, any further comments from the public? Any further comments from commission members or staff or the applicant? Uh, do you have any further comments as a result of the public comment, I guess, as applicant Evan? I know I, Mr. Uh, Tony did comment some, uh, Mr. Pretty, do you have any comments?
No, I think between um, myself and Tony, I think we've. Uh, addressed the comments.
Okay. Anyone else have any comments before we close this matter as a public hearing? Hearing none, then I think we close this matter of public hearing and we can discuss this later.
Thank you.
And then the next one is item number six, that's eighteen nineteen Etzel Road, and I understand that uh, we're opening and continuing this matter. Is that correct? Um, yeah, the, the D E P wanted some additional comments, so we're gonna continue that to our. Next meeting, which is on April twentieth. So if you're here for that one, that's the eighteen nineteen Etzel Road. We'll have our public hearing on that one, or we're opening it and continuing it to our April twentieth. Uh, meeting date. So with that, I think uh, that, that completes our public hearings portion of our uh, evening's agenda. So what we'll do now is we'll head off to our minutes from our. March sixteenth meeting, which were sent out in our pack. You know, people had a chance to review those. And if so, someone may, make an appropriate motion with respect to the March sixteenth, twenty twenty-three minutes. So anyone want to make that motion? Oh, by the way, who, who's voting? Uh, Joe Chavik's gone, so we need uh. I don't know who's up, Massimo or Sharon, uh.
I check I'm up. Chuck, it's Massimo with great.
Yeah, we, we double checked then. That's, that's correct. Massimo's up.
Okay, Massimo, you're up. So you're uh, voting on these. Okay, so um, so I'll make a motion with respect to the minutes. Uh, Joe Vaiuso moves to approve the minutes. There are second.
Make that motion.
And Fred seconds. Any further discussion? All those in favor, Fred Russo? We lose Fred? I heard a, a noise which I consider to be a yes, uh. Uh, Joe Vaiuso?
Yeah, Joe Vaiuso approves.
So in favor.
Okay, uh, yep, Fred's in favor. Massimo?
Massimo's in favor.
And Cher's also, so those minutes are approved. So then maybe we can go back and consider the uh, public hearing items that we could consider, starting with uh, items number one or two. That's the six fifty Main Street. Uh, that was the two-family residence and the special exception for the parking modification. And uh, perhaps we can uh, pull those resolutions up, probably starting with the parking modification first, right? Cause we would need to approve that before we could approve the application. So Evan, maybe you can bring those, that one up? Okay, so this one, again, this was the parking modification. Um, again, to allow uh, the, the, there are seven proposed spaces, I believe there were. Eleven, uh, how many were required?
Eleven.
Eleven. And the theory is that. Where historic, our regulations say where there's been historically. You know, survived with less parking than was required by special exception, we could continue that. And I think we put that in. With the recognition of a number of downtown area lots, particularly where. Parking when there may be a change of use and there's not full compliance, but then you can see uh. You know, if, if it fits for the change of use, we can approve it by special exception, even if it doesn't comply with both. Entire gamut, so. I think that was the uh. You know, the testimony is that I guess that. The, the new use was a, a two-family as opposed to a business. It had been a Napa auto park, and then it was approved as a. As a pet uh, um. Some kind of pet grooming facility, which I think was never built. But it was a commercial use and I guess the. The parking is probably less than the commercial use. Um, and uh, for the, for the two-family. So um, and, and it would keep the same parking, and I guess there is certain amount of off-street parking in the area. By a big budding area, so. So what do uh, what do people think about that? Are we, we okay with that? Fred, any comments? We're having tough, tough time hearing Fred tonight. We'll, we'll just, Joe Vaiuso, are you, are we good? Are you good with this?
Yeah, I'm good with this because, you know, it, it, it's. It's a reduction of what, what was there. And, and it was true when Napa was there, there was a lot more traffic than. Than a, a two, uh, two-family, a two-family house will bring. I think uh, and it's a, it's a. A residential neighborhood, more, more than a, a commercial neighborhood over there. I, I, I.
Thanks. So you're good with the parking special exception for the reduced parking? Good. Marcy, are you good?
Um, it's Marcy here. Yeah, I mean, I know how the, the site functions. I think that the. You know, the number of spaces needed for the apartments and what's between the two buildings is pretty sufficient. You know, for the uses that are going to be proposed, so. And you know. I think as. More and more development gets proposed in the town center with public transportation, you know. We're gonna be seeing this more and more. Like we did last week, but um, that's another subject.
Thanks, Marcy. So you're good with it. Massimo?
Uh, yeah, I'm very familiar with that area and um, I don't see any problem at all. With um, with the parking issue there, um. And I think it's gonna be a great improvement for the town. So I'm, I'm in approval.
Okay, great, excellent. Uh, Fred, is that uh?
I'm back again, I think. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, I, I, I uh, agree with everybody. I think that the, it's a much, much higher and better use. Uh, especially where it is, uh, than a commercial piece of property, so I would be in favor of whatever they're proposing.
Okay, so you're good with that parking one?
Yep.
And, and, and I am as well, so for all the reasons. Um, Evan, can you pull up the motion? I see we have, right now, which the findings are there, but how about the actual motion? Or, or is it, or is that the finding modification? Uh, is this the uh, okay?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I, I just. Threw in the one finding about the uh, parking modification into this one. And then I have the actual two-family. Um, and I can remove that. Finding about the parking in there.
Okay, so do we need just for the uh, for the parking one? Is this? Okay, it, it, what, what do you?
Harry Smith's house planner, can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah. I, I think you should take a separate.
I I think you should take a separate vote on the parking and just include the finding and no conditions.
Okay. Recommend it up for the.
Yeah, and then go back to the other one, yeah.
Okay, okay, then, so I'll make a motion to approve the special exception for the parking modification. When making the finding is set forth in this finding, which is that the modification, the parking requirement for section six point five point. One point one to seven spaces proposed is warranted as the site has historically accommodated uses. That do not comply with current parking standards without creating a risk to public health and safety, so that's good. So I want to make that motion to approve the application in accordance with that finding.
Fred Russo makes that motion.
Motion made by Fred, is there a second?
No seconds.
Joe Vaiuso seconds, any further discussion? All those in favor, Fred?
Fred Russo in favor.
Joe Vaiuso?
Oh, in favor.
Marcy?
Marcy's in favor.
Massimo?
Massimo's in favor.
And the chair is also in favor, so that application is approved, let's pull up the second one then. Which is the actual special exception for the two-family dwelling. Uh, as well, that's a a separate application and uh. Can you re, well, I I guess, you we sort of covered it, we kind of combined them, but I I can run through, does everyone uh? Again, this is uh you know, appropriate for the neighborhood, seems it certainly architecturally nice and. You know, I I know we we were added some issues with the landscaping, which I think uh. Uh, that we're gonna be, I I included in there. Um, it it what about the list? Yeah, I think you added that, the site should be revised to include a planning list that that she'll include, right? So you've added that one, right, so? Yes, okay, great, so uh we'll just run through, Fred, are you good with this one?
I'm good, Fred's in favor.
Okay, Joe, we haven't.
Someone make a motion?
No, we haven't made a motion yet. Yeah, J- J- uh, J- Joe Vaiuso, any comments?
I was in favor.
Okay, uh, Marcy, you're good, right?
Um, yeah, for the most part, I think that, you know, with the the area that's available, they may have some challenges making it seventy percent native. Um, just because there's not a lot of space for a lot of plantings in that area to the percolate, but um, you know, I've. I would, I'm happy to review it when, as it comes in for appropriateness.
Massimo?
Massimo's in favor.
Okay, so then if someone want to make a motion to approve the application. Uh, in accordance with the uh staff uh recommendation that's presently posted in front of us. There's a sort of uh one finding, that's number two, we're gonna make that number one, I guess, and then the two conditions. Um, and the one is regarding the standard lighting condition, and the second's regarding the uh. Addition of the plants, the the planting list that includes seventy percent native plantings. So with that, someone want to make that a motion to approve in accordance with that finding and those two conditions.
No moves, so approve.
Joe Vaiuso makes the motion, is there a second?
Massimo seconds.
Second by Massimo, further discussion, all those in favor, Fred?
Fred's in favor.
Joe Vaiuso?
Joe Vaiuso in favor.
Marcy?
Marcy's in favor.
Massimo?
Massimo's in favor.
And chairs also in favor, so that application's approved. Okay, then, so that's uh, that's uh items one or two, the next one I think we maybe will consider is. The uh Rockets Point Road, one, that's item number four. And uh if you can pull that one up, um. Evan, it looks like you've done that. Um, and again, this is um. I think there was uh, you know, they're they're combining two lots. Uh, that had two separate houses and they're making them uh. They're merging the lots, oh, you, yeah, did you add that, the merger condition on there? Did you say you were gonna add that? Yeah.
Uh, yeah, and if you guys are comfortable with the language.
Yeah, okay. Um, okay, and there were some questions about keeping the, yeah, I know the question came about about the tree. Um, I think, Marcy, I I interpreted your, you 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 were saying, hey, look, it's just something, that's something to watch out for. You remove one because you move one, it could affect others, so obviously, you don't want to have a dead tree if it turns out, you know, just. You know, people be awareing about, I mean, is there anything else you wanted to comment about that, Marcy?
Um, just, would, I think that the neighbors need to be in conversation with each other. And that an arborist should be looking at it as they take it down, to assess the health and the impact of the other. Um, that's all, just, you know, being good neighbors.
Okay, so that's a recommendation. Okay, um, any other, anyone else have any other comments? I mean, if not, does someone want to make a motion to approve the application? In accordance with the findings, the findings of consistency with the policies of Coastal Area Management Act and the three conditions. Again, that are in the staff report that it's uh reviewed by Evan and certainly presently set forth in front of us right now.
Fred Russo, I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Fred, is there a second?
Massimo's second.
Second by Massimo, further discussion, all those in favor, Fred?
Fred's in favor.
Joe Vaiuso?
Who's in favor?
Marcy?
Marcy's in favor.
Massimo?
Massimo's in favor.
Sharon, oops, Sharon, I'm sorry, you're not voting, Chuck's also in favor, okay. Okay, then, that brings us then to uh, I think the next one is the item number five. Which is fifteen Etzel Road, that's a special exception coastal site plan. And um. And I guess the issue there is uh the. You know, the the. It's it's a tear down and uh. Facing a a bigger house. On a lot, but the lot conforms with the zoning requirements, and it's also elevated above the. Higher than it's required, I think it's the twelve-foot base foot elevation, and I think it's at what, eighteen? So there's an extra six feet in there. Um, there were three, the FEMA, the uh CAM listed, you know, three recommendations, one was configured. Consider reconfiguring the house so that's entirely out of that. And the applicant was, said that would restrict, I guess, the use of the property, um. Uh, but the other two, I think they just agree to the uh. Uh, must be FEMA compliant, I think it did exceed that, and then the soil erosion control, which are required. Um, so there were some comments about that, whether we should be um. You know, the the, Sharon made the comment that the FEMA requirements may be obsolete, um. Yeah, some issues, so um, does anyone have any comments on that, on this one, like you, I don't know if you want to run through uh? Any comments, Fred, do you have any thoughts?
No, I I I'm ready to vote for this.
Okay, uh, Joe Vaiuso, any thoughts?
No, I'm ready to vote as well.
Okay, Marcy?
Um, yeah, I'm good with the, the way it's been presented, I can make a decision.
Okay, Massimo?
I'm also ready to make a.
Okay, yeah, I think it's, I I'm okay with approving the application, I again, I think it, the putting the. Base fellow, it they they put in some extra. You know, it's not just right at it, it's six feet higher, so I I mean, that's, I think, the major thing, and it's. You know, they conform, it conforms with the setbacks and the requirements of the regulations, so. Um, so I think it's generally good, and I I mean, we've. I think we've approved similar applications in the past, so. So with that, uh, and I didn't see deep saying no in this one, so. Uh, with that, does someone make a motion to approve the application in accordance with the findings and the conditions in the staff report that Evan has presented? Again, it's the findings of consistency, and then uh the. The two conditions about soil erosion controls, you know, notifying the Z E O, and then the, then the standard lighting condition. So I want to.
Fred Russo, I'll make that the motion.
Okay, Fred makes a motion to approve with the findings and the two conditions, they're second.
Joe Vaiuso seconds.
Second by Joe Vaiuso, any further discussion, all those in favor, Fred?
Fred's in favor.
Joe?
Who's in favor?
Marcy?
Marcy's in favor.
Massimo?
Massimo's in favor.
And the chair is also in favor. Okay, I think that completes then our uh the public hearings that we heard this evening, that brings us into correspondence. Gary, what's going on with correspondence?
I'm Harry Smith Town Planner, um, did get one item in. And let me just share my screen quickly.
Chuck, we're supposed to do the minutes.
Oh, good, thank you.
Oh, right, I thought, did we approve?
Well, we did do the minutes.
I thought we did.
Yeah. Uh, before you went to the public hearing items, right?
Yeah, we did, yeah, I did.
Okay. Yeah, but that wasn't, oh, okay, I wasn't part of it.
Right? Eric, right.
Um, so let me share my screen here. Uh, you should be able to see a graphic here, I think I've shown this to you before, this is the proposed um. Ben Callahan Sports Complex, this is actually in Guilford, so you can see, here's the town line here. There's Route twenty-two, the new Rotary, and Bill Middles Castle is just off the left, by the left corner here. Um, I just put this up as reference, um, the correspondence item was um from the. Town of Guilford Planning and Zoning Commission through the Town Clerk's Office in Branford. And the proposal is for. Some zoning regulation changes, um. The first would be uh reducing uh a setback from the Route One street line from two hundred feet to seventy-five feet. And the second one, it would reduce a setback from the residential district boundary uh from a hundred fifty feet to a hundred feet. And the third would change the maximum height, which is currently set at forty, with a ability to go up to a maximum of fifty-five feet. With a special exception issued by the Guilford Planning Zone Commission, this would just flat out allow up to sixty feet without the special exception process. Um, so just in terms of the context of the plan, um, there's a proposed medical office building, I think that would probably be closer than. The existing setback, I think it's the athletic facility building that would be um. Up to sixty feet, and um I don't know where the residential district boundary here, but I think there's probably something here that. Would be a potential conflict with the way this is laid out, so, just wanted to let you know about that, uh, as a reference, I think we sent it off to um. All of you in the packet, um. So that is really the only item we have with correspondence.
Chuck Anderson, thank you, Gary. Uh, okay, that brings us then to uh old business. Um, and item number one is uh Sophia's Bakery, and that's a zoning map amendment. It's scheduled for our next meeting on April twentieth. Uh, item number two is our outdoor dining regulations that I, we had some brief discussion about to comply with the new state law. And I think that's scheduled also for February, uh, for what, February, right, for April twentieth? Uh, and then for new business, um. I think uh there's a couple items, number one and two are Forty Penn Road, looks like a. Oversized accessory structure and accessory apartment, and that'll probably go on. For April twentieth, what do you think, Gary, or I don't know?
Um, I I, Evan, refresh my memory, I think you told me there's some potential Z B A issue or something like that, is that right?
I'm sorry, which which issue?
Uh, Penn Road, the two new applications for Forty Penn Road.
Um, uh, they had been submitted previously, uh, some additional variances were needed, so they're scheduled for April eighteenth. Uh, so hopefully we can have them on the April twentieth, uh, special.
Okay, so we can't make the twentieth, okay, great.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll we'll. Assuming that gets through Z B A, I suppose, probably hear that on the twentieth. So in terms of other business, item number one is sixty-one Bourbon Drive, the old hospice building, special exception approval, request to remove significant trees. What's wrong with that, Gary?
Um, Harry Smith Town Planner, let me share my screen again and put a graphic up. Um, back when this was approved, um, one of the conditions was to identify all significant trees on the property, cause they had not done that. Um, in the plan set that was submitted by the closing of the public hearing, since uh the approval, they have done. That they've identified all of them uh within the area requested. And are proposing to remove um a few trees at the perimeter of the parking lot, particularly ones that are. Be in conflict with the location of a walking trail, just to recap, there's a sidewalk. I believe it comes in right now, but it's gonna be refurbished, that comes down basically where my curse is going. And it comes, is planned to come across through a crosswalk, cross the driveway. This, even though there's a graphic here for the paving changes, this is the existing driveway end, existing parking lot, this is all the existing building. It's gonna be redeveloped, um, so that pathway is gonna cross the driveway, and then this would be a brand new. Um, I believe a crushed stone pathway. Back along the edge of the um parking lot, and it will go into the open space right about here. Which is all by the town of Branford to the south. So to do that, there's a twelve-inch pine that's right in the way, basically, of the path, a fourteen-inch pine. And a six-inch, twelve-inch twin pine, it's pretty close. And again, as Marcy, I think, mentioned in one of the last applications, these were all probably intertwined in terms of the roots, so. Uh, they're proposing to take all three of them down, um, I think it's one of the uh. It it was probably a situation where a small white pine was proposed as kind of a, you know, an ornamental tree, not realizing that thing's gonna grow up to be, you know. Potentially hundreds of feet tall eventually, if it survives. Um, these other axes here are lights, there's a twenty-four-inch pine here. And a twelve-inch and a fourteen-inch pine, a sixteen-inch, and another sixteen-inch pine. That are gonna be either right in the path or or close to it, that are proposing to take out completely. Uh, this twelve-inch sycamore is right in the existing island, it's going to be removed, they gotta reconfigure how this. Traffic flows in here a little bit, so that's gonna also need to come out. And there is a twelve-inch pine and a sixteen-inch pine right where they're doing some stormwater drainage work. Um, and these are three lights here, so those, you know, they've got trees, but they're gonna come out. And there is a triple maple here, a twelve-inch crab apple, an eight-inch oak. Um, this one's just barely close to the Lions Park area that is also subject to a public access easement. Um, this line here is the sewer, sanitary sewer line connection, which connects over to um. The property over to the east, the uh, the old Saint Elizabeth Church property, that's sixty-five Bourbon. So that line is gonna be replaced as part of this project, so these trees will need to come down to allow that replacement to occur. I had a conversation with town engineers, is there any way to save any of these, and he goes, no, there's no way, and they're also in the sewer line easement, so. That's the scope of what's proposed to be removed, um, there's several other trees that I've shown on here, there's a lot of significant trees up here. They're gonna be retained, um, and of course, several over in this side of the property. And there's several trees you can see here along the southern edge of the parking lot. And I think there's a couple more trees along here that aren't showing on this plan, so a lot of trees will remain, and then there'll be a planting of trees in the new islands here. Um, as well, so I did go out in the site with um. My zoning officer and the uh, in the wetlands officer agent, and uh discussed about. With them what not to remove, what to remove, and went over pretty carefully on the site, so. But these seem to be the trees that need to go, unfortunately, so. So they would need permission from the commission to remove them, because if they were on the plan as to be retained, then. They would need to be replaced with a collection of trees that would equal in the size diameter of the uh, the trunk. The tree that's removed, and frankly, the result, I don't. Uh, area on the site that isn't already planted with trees that could accommodate that, so.
So you're recommending that, what what's your recommendation?
Uh, my recommendation is a, approve the removal, it seems reasonable and required by um the construction proposed and approved already.
Okay, does anyone have any questions?
Sounds like an old uh uh landscape plan years ago, and this thing has been overgrown for many years, and it just. They they reached its its peak, they're they're in the way now for for the new development.
Some of them, yeah, they're retaining most of the trees on site, I mean, this is just a, basically just a handful that need to go.
Trees take up a lot of space in in diameter, as far as the the branching and everything, and they're.
Yeah.
They're old landscaping trees, the way it sounds like, and they got, they they got overgrown, so time to change them.
Hi, it's Marcy. You know, like Joe said, you know. You know, like Joe said, you know, sometimes when it's a proposed. Uh planting process and their trees are being introduced, you know, by us, they're not thinking about the thirty year. Size, they're thinking about the five to ten year size, and you know, there's a level of anticipation that. You know, they're gonna have to be pruned or taken back, you know, because white pines are used like that all of the time and, you know.
Right.
I'm thinking that it's in its native environment, it's really, it has a different place in the ecological process of. You know, but that's not what this is, so, you know, and and then to to try to put an artificial measure of. You know, take one down, put one up, it sometimes it just, it doesn't work as a straight swap, you have to kind of look. A little bit more loosely about what's logical for the situation at hand, so. And, you know.
So you're good with the recommendation, Marcy?
Of course, yes, absolutely.
Okay. Um, Sharon, did you have any comments?
Um, yeah, I was just um wondering, I'm just really glad they're gonna retain as many trees as um. They are and that it's um that they will be planting new ones, but what? Um, I thought, Harriet, that there are trees by the path that's gonna be going to the. Um, open space, can the path be rerouted in any way or restructured? So that any of those trees can be saved?
Um, I don't think there's really a way to do that, um there are trees all in this area, so if we moved it. Frankly, there's grading issues as you um get into this corner of the property. So even if you went further away, you know, save these trees, you'd be taking other trees down, um. So I I think these are like, as as Marcy said, these are white pines that I think were probably planted with anticipation, they would. Look nice against the what was retained when they cleared the site originally and now thirty years later, they don't, you know. In addition, they're right in the location of, you know, the proposed path, so it's balancing everything out, unfortunately. You know, we've got to go. Um, so when the easement is already also, you know, been finalized, so that's all chiseled in at this point. For that path.
Just a thought.
Yeah, no, I appreciate it, yeah.
Any other questions, comments from anyone? Not does someone make a motion that we uh. Authorize the removal of the trees that have been uh outlined on this plan and articulated by Harry?
Don't uh move, still prove that.
Motion made by Joe Vaiusos, your second?
Marcy will second it.
Second by Marcy. Further discussion, all those in favor, Fred?
Fred's in favor.
Joe Vaiuso?
Favor.
Marcy?
Marcy's in favor.
Massimo?
Massimo's in favor.
Chair's also in favor. Next item is uh time extension request for three eighty-three East Main Street. What's that about here?
Uh, Harry Smith Town Planner, um. You may or may not recall, um last year, there was this approval for um. Under section six point eight for grading, um. Believe this is the right one. Yes, so that was, it came in at twenty twenty-one, the very end of the year, and in about a year ago. The commission approved, it was effective on the twenty-fifth of March. Um, grading, this was for the additional building on the additional property, this is the old days insight. And it was a property that kind of goes up on a hill um to the east of the development away from. Uh Route ninety-five and um. As part of that approval, um. The regulations provide for a one-year timeframe for actually doing the grading work. They've done a lot of it, but they haven't quite finished it. Before the twenty-fifth, we did receive a email request to extend. Uh the timeframe an additional year, which is provided for in the regulations. And that is in a letter here that we formalized that into a letter later on, but we did have the request before the twenty-fifth. Um. So they're just requesting additional year to complete the work.
Okay, any uh? Questions or comments for anyone? Not someone want to make a motion to approve the uh. Year, the the time extension request of additional year to complete the work for this uh grading special exception.
Fred Russo, I'll make that uh motion.
Motion made by Fred, is there a second?
Second by Massimo.
Second by Massimo, any further discussion? All those in favor, Fred?
Fred's in favor.
Joe?
Who's in favor?
Marcy?
Marcy's in favor.
Massimo?
Massimo's in favor.
And Chair's also in favor. And then uh planner's report, anything going on here?
Um, just to let you know a little bit, um. Ahead of a formal application, uh we did have a meeting with um. Representatives from a potential developer of the Regal Cinema property near exit fifty-five, and so you will be seeing. Probably the next month or two, a conceptual plan to redevelop that property, um so. I won't go into any further at this point, but I just want to give you a little bit of a heads up. And also, you may recall, we discussed the last, I think it was last meeting, um doing a listserv question to the planners listserv. Um, we did put that out as it was finalized and unfortunately, we didn't get much of a response, so. I may put it out again, um and see if it just was bad timing. I think I did it on Friday afternoon because I just got there then, but um. And there were other questions in front of them, so maybe I'll try again, um. But that's basically all I have, was there any questions, and I don't know, Evan, if you have anything else you want to add?
No.
Okay.
Gary, I think I mentioned the uh the Atlantic Wharf, you know, that's been on hold, that I think I I checked the court docket and apparently they've reached a settlement.
Okay.
That's, when I looked it up, it said that they marked it as settled, but uh. Um, that, I mean, sometimes when you reach a settlement, you mark it as settled, but it still takes a month or so, if you're for you to iron out details and things, but. But I mean, I think that's, I mean, that's the thing. You know, uh the Atlantic Wharf approved years ago and it's been, you know.
Right.
Bunch of bricks and dirt and nothing's happened and and they've been finding out who has the environmental cleanup. You know.
Right, right, um, you know, I mean, as far as I understand it, that that approval is still valid, um.
Yeah.
And I believe the developer is interested certainly in going ahead, is my understanding, so.
Yeah, so, anyway, I mean, that's just something I I noticed when I had checked before, so, because I knew that. It's it's like anything, you know, nothing happens unless you have a trial date and then people get rational right before they have to start presenting their case and.
Thanks, Marcy, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Do we know, I mean, I I'm assuming we don't know anything about the settlement, but do we know if? The case is requiring. Um, a new application, or do they just have to kind of come back and get an extension on the old one, or you know, what's the, what's?
I don't think it really has anything to do in terms of. Require any kind of modification of the plan, but I, that could be wrong, but my understanding is that we're just, as Chuck mentioned, discussing, I believe it was um. Largely monetary, who is responsible for what um out there.
Right, yeah, and I guess I I I thought that I had heard rumors that it, you know, what was going on may change. The plan and that they might have to come back and I don't, you know, and I just wasn't clear if. You know, we give approval, they have a certain amount of time to put it in, where we, where they are on the clock relative to that. Or what, you know.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it was, I believe, changed around, so I think it was held in abeyance of. Due to the court case, but I'll double check on that, but I think they have sufficient time. I'll check on the timeframe and, you know, we'll do what needs to be done, obviously, but they're pretty um. Up to speed and tracking that kind of thing.
He does, it was approved, is that what you're saying?
I believe that's the last thing I heard, there was some discussion, I believe, about maybe some changes would be desirable to settle it, but I don't. Know if, I haven't heard anything about that recently, so like, my understanding is they're proposing it as it's already approved, but you know. I will let everyone know when I find out.
Okay.
But what the the court docket says that the with the withdrawal or settlement is due by Ap- April twenty-eighth. So, at the end of the month, they they've sort of, they marked it as settled and then they have to.
Finalize it.
That's that's the public information on the court website, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else?
No, just note that we have a couple weeks between meetings, so um. We'll see you all a little bit later in April when it's. Possibly warmer.
Okay.
Hey, uh, before we go, I may not be able to make the twen- the meeting of the twentieth.
Okay.
Okay, that's uh. We'll miss you, but. Yeah, we'll get that.
I'm just so they can prepare.
Okay, excellent, thanks for, thanks for giving us the heads up, anything else, anyone got anything else? If not, then does someone make a motion to adjourn?
Fred Russo, make a motion, we adjourn.
Motion made by Fred, is there a second?
Joe seconds.
Joe seconds, any further discussion, all in favor, Fred?
Fred's in favor.
Joe?
Joe in favor.
Marcy? Massimo?
Massimo's in favor.
And Chair's also in favor, so we're adjourned.
This program was brought to you in part through the support of the town of Branford. Watch town meetings and other videos on demand at branfordtv.org.